We are live. Thank you. All right. All right. Good afternoon, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Riverside Middle School and for this evening's Board of Education meeting for June 14th, 2021. It is 7:10 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order and at this time ask Madam Secretary... 7:10? And ask Madam Secretary Janoon to take role.
Mrs. Berry?
Yes, here.
Mrs. Alzayat?
Here.
Ms. Fawaz?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Thank you. Here?
Myself, here. Ms. Kaminsky?
Thank you.
Here.
And Mr. Sabal?
Here.
Mr. Cherry of Aqurum.
All right, thank you. And at this time, I would like to ask everyone to please stand, some of you already are, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. And at this time, I now will turn it over to our superintendent.
Consent agenda?
I'm sorry. Yeah.
It's okay.
No more coffee for me.
You're in here.
We're on a roll.
All right.
Sick.
So the reading of our consent agenda. Madam Secretary.
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the June 14th, 2021 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, May 24th, 2021, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, May 24th, 2021, and the check registry dated May 1st through May 31st, 2021.
Support.
And we have a reading from Najah, supported by Nadia. The Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the June 14th, 2021 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, May 24th, 2021, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, May 24th, 2021, and the check registry dated May 1st through May 31st, 2021. Are there any questions? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And we have an abstention from... Ah, sorry. A nay. A nay, my apologies. From Trustee Fawaz. All right. All those... We have the vote, correct?
Yep.
So 6-1, and it passes.
Yep.
All right. Now, I will turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Musallah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Board of Education, community. One of the things that we want to do as a district is at board meetings, continue to recognize some of the great things happening in our district with our students. Because that's what it's all about. It's about our students. And I'll tell you, this robotics team is... You know, Mr. Merbias and this robotics team have done some phenomenal things. I know I've read off several awards that they have won recently. So we thought it'd be a good idea to bring them in to show off a little bit and how... I mean, they're just phenomenal. I mean, the things they do, I couldn't do if you trained me for 10,000 hours, Mr. P. Merbias. I'll tell you right now, I wouldn't be able to do what these kids do. But I want to invite Mr. Merbias up to the podium to introduce his team, and I think they're going to be putting on a little show for us. So, Mr. Merbias, please.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Musallah. Thank you, Board, for inviting us to come into your meeting and taking a small portion of your time. But those of you that know me know that I tend to get long-winded when I get up here and start talking. And I honestly think that that's something that Dr. Musallah and myself have in common. Because...
It's okay. It's all love. I love you.
When you have a lot of good things to say, it's hard to, like, keep it short. It really is. What I wanted to do is, we're kind of highlighting the whole robotics program here today because we can't just limit it to the high school because the middle school has done some great things and it's just you can't recognize one without recognizing the other. And, you know, the kids are going to be talking. They're going to be talking individually about, from each of the teams, about what they've accomplished and what we did, what they did during the season. I want to start out by showing a video that was created by a company called Lambert. It's a PR company from Phoenix that Dr. Musallah brought in in 2019. And the goal of this video was to... They were wanting to start a pilot program highlighting what good things are happening in schools. And we were the first episode. We were going to be the first episode. So they came in in January of 2020, I think. So January of last year. It's all blending together now. And they recorded... Here at Riverside, they interviewed high school kids, middle school kids, just talked about the whole program, the staff. And they, you know, promptly, you know, then COVID hit and everything shut down. So the whole program got put on hold. And then they sent us clips just past fall. And among those clips was a three-and-a-half-minute promo that I'm going to show here. And I also took and edited in some things from the current season that happened after they did the initial recording. So... But you are going to see students in here with the wrong year because this was all recorded last year. So it has them as freshmen when they're now sophomores. They have them as juniors when they're now seniors. They have them as a principal when they're no longer a principal. So, yes, Dennis Filetti will not go away. So... But he was, you know, integral part of starting the whole robotics program here at Riverside. So as far as the curriculum is concerned. So I want to show that to you right now. A word to the people watching live on YouTube Live. You will not be able to see the video right now, but it will be posted as a part of the upload. When the... On the website. Okay, it'll be on the website. So I'm going to go ahead and play that for you right now.
We're in Mr. Merbias' robotics class.
I see myself doing robotics because it's like a fun thing to do and it helps me with a lot of my other subjects.
It's much more than just robots.
I teach robotics classes to 5th through 8th graders in some of the programs that we started a couple of years ago. I also coach our high school robotics team. Or two years ago, we started a high school robotics team. And it took off. The community loved it. We got a lot of exposure in the press and we did pretty well at our tournaments. It's opening up science and technology and math in a whole different atmosphere than what they've been exposed to traditionally. But they learn about programming, electronics, building, fabrication, CAD design. There's a whole business on with the budget like what we have.
There's not just book work.
It gets kids involved. It gives a practical use of their... What they've done. Because they have to learn math. They have to actually build something. So they have to construct it. And they have to use different materials. And they have to work together as a team.
It's really fun. Like, I really like it. It's, I don't know, it's just amazing. One person's working on the arm. One person's working on, like, programming. One person's working on, like, actually building the whole chassis.
Because I'm interested in, like, engineering and seeing how things are built, like, the inside and, like, behind the scenes, I guess you could say, on things, how things are built. So I found robotics like the perfect spot for that.
I've been in robotics total for six years and I've been in high school robotics for three years. It's helped me learn more stuff and become more knowledgeable about the STEM aspect and stuff related to robotics.
I started in my 8th grade year. It was a very good experience and working with my team members really helped build me up to where I am right now in terms of robotics. A couple of years ago, I was unsure which career path I would take. I was leaning towards medical. But now I'm kind of switched over to engineering.
The nice thing about learning in the context of robotics is that there's so many skills that you can develop. So, you know, there's mechanical side. There's the electrical side. There's the software side. At the end of the day, there's so much to learn and there's so many ways you can contribute.
We take those students to FIRST Robotics tournaments and they compete against other schools in the area.
The competitions are, like, really, really fun. Like, I really enjoy going to them because first, like, you get to actually show what you worked on for the entire season. And it's, like, really interesting to see, like, all your work compete.
They're also learning how to do community outreach. So they go out to local businesses to try to get their support, to make donations to the team. It also allows the community to know more about what we're doing here at the school.
I think the younger they can get hands-on experience, I think the better.
I think it teaches you, like, we're, like, all of us can work together and, like, achieve something even bigger than, like, you can think of.
Really, it's, you know, they're seeing what specifically their contribution can be to an overall product, which is really how the world works. Everybody kind of specializes in what they do.
It's amazing how editing can make you look way better and sound way better than... And so, you know, we went through this past year and you can see the fruits of what the kids built. And, you know, like I said, I'm going to let them really talk about the specifics. But, you know, a lot happened from, you know, January of 2022 to today. And, you know, a lot more than I thought was going to happen when, you know, when everything was suspended. And, you know, I was really surprised at how the kids stepped up and did more than what was really expected of them. You know, the FIRST Robotics organization gave us options to compete virtually. And they gave us several options. You know, there was skills competition. There was other things. And all we had to do was pick one of them. There was, you know, there was virtual competition. There was, you know, just really submission. Just had to write something and submit it. And, you know, all you had to do was pick one. And just to keep our team active and engaged. And, you know, they, you know, they... Like I said, I'm going to let them talk about it. But when they're done, I'm going to come back and just kind of summarize what was accomplished and make sure that they didn't miss anything. We're going to start out with the middle school team. And Mr. Phillips runs that. So he's going to kind of introduce his team.
Thank you, Board of Education, for having us here tonight. You know, the middle school team has really stepped up this past year and they really rose to the occasion with all of the challenges that were presented. And I've just had so much fun working with them and look forward to continuing to work with them as they become high schoolers now as well. But I'll let you listen to them. They can tell you all about the season.
Hi, my name is Aya Subra. I'm part of the finance and programming sub-teams. And we're the Robo-Rapids, a middle school robotics team who actually got the opportunity to compete as a high school robotics team. Our first year doing FRC was the beginning of 2020, but it got cut short due to COVID. And ever since then, we had to adapt to going to virtual meetings. And those virtual meetings, once we began the 2020-21 year, we were discussing how we would design the robot, how we would use computer-aided design, and so on. And once we came back in school, which thankfully we were able to do, we obviously had to take safety precautions, stay six feet apart, wear masks, and so on. And I think that was definitely kind of unique, to say the least, since we were all working on the same robot and had to kind of keep a distance to stay safe. And like I said, I'm part of the finance team. So something that I kind of thought was also different. Usually, we collect sponsors from local businesses, but this year, not a lot of people were willing to do it since COVID. We actually got most of our money from grants.
Hi, I'm Jenna Ibrahim. And I'm a part of the mechanical and design team. Hi, I'm Jenna Ibrahim and I'm a part of the mechanical and design team. In the previous years, we built our robot based on manual instructions. But this year, we decided to take a step forward and develop our own robotics design. We were constantly modifying our robot to make it our best work. Although we went through a lot of tough challenges and obstacles, our hard work definitely paid off and we created the most effective and efficient robot that we can.
Sorry. Hello, I'm Halak Maya. I'm part of the programming design... No, not design, sorry. Programming, electrical, and mechanical team. Last year, we were given the unique opportunity to compete as a high school robotics team while we were still middle school students. We were one of five teams in the whole country who got this chance. The high school competition, or FRC, is a lot harder and more advanced than the middle school competitions that we had done in the past. The teams that we were competing against were composed of only high schoolers who are a lot more experienced and had done this for much longer than we had. We ended up ranking higher than some of the teams that had been doing this for a lot longer while it was only our first year. As a result of our hard work and dedication, we even won the Rookie Game Changers Award, which is a very prestigious award given only to the top first-year teams. While we were very nervous to be competing and students older than us, we were able to successfully design, build, and program a robot that proved to be a fierce competitor.
Hi, I'm Yara Nassar and I'm part of the design and mechanical team. So while normal FTC teams usually have, like, around like 15 members, we only had six members. So we had, like, we had more opportunities to get closer and just become, like, genuine friends. And since we were a smaller team, we also got to do more. Like, most of us had lots of sub-teams. We did more things on the robot and we stuck to things. So while I stuck to the mechanical team, I helped with the design and I even programmed sometimes. So as a team, I think we'd like to say thank you to Mr. Phillips for not only just helping us with the issues we faced while obviously designing the robot, but he took a lot of time out of, like, his days and stuff to stay after school with us. So, thank you.
I just want to reiterate what Halah said. This is a group of middle school students competing against high school students. And who was the short person before me? So, you know, they're 8th graders competing against high school students. And they placed in their division in the top 20, I believe, out of 29 teams. So it wasn't so shabby, considering they're middle schoolers. And when they did the award show, which was broadcast literally worldwide, it was a webcast, the MC made it a point to say that the winner of the Rookie Game Changer Award was six middle school students, an all-middle-school team. And he sounded stunned as he was saying it. And I actually know this guy. He's from Michigan. He's at all our tournaments locally. And I could tell he was sincere in really understanding the weight of what this team accomplished as a group of middle school students. So I think they did just a phenomenal job with what they did and I think they deserve their own round of applause. Okay, now Reyna and Ahmed are going to talk about the FRC team.
Hello, everyone. As you know, we're Team 7174, the Protobots. I'm Reyna Mezer. And first, I'd like to thank you guys for this opportunity to share our experience as a team over this crazy year. First, I want to begin by talking about 2020 once we came back from our competition in Canada. In that competition in Canada, we made it to semifinals and we won the Innovation and Control Award. After that, all of that excitement, we came back and literally four days after school was called off for an extra-long spring break, turned out to be longer than two weeks. So after that, we awaited, like, news from the district and FIRST in Michigan to see where we proceed next, if we could keep working on our robot or if the season would come to an end. After hearing that a season would come to an end, we immediately took the initiative to allocate our efforts towards creating PPE for both the local hospitals and our staff here in the district. We created a combination of 3D-printed face masks, cloth face masks, and Mr. Merbias actually created kits to hand out to the entire team so that at home, we can make face shields out of window seal and elastic. I thought it was a really cool idea and we were able to make about over 3,000 PPE. And we ended up being in the top 20 for the FIRST in Michigan 1 Million PPE Challenge. Following those efforts, we were interviewed for our local paper, The Press and Guide. And they highlighted everything, as I've said before, all of our efforts that we were doing through this really hard year. And I myself was also interviewed for the Channel 7 News and three other FIRST students around the country. And we were able to share, like, really what we were doing here at FIRST. Throughout the rest of that year, we experimented with applications like Google Meet, Zoom, JamBoards, and Discord so that we can make do with what we had virtually since we were unable to meet in person at the time. We mainly used Discord to brainstorm ideas for the upcoming virtual challenges in which we really didn't know a lot of details about until kickoff in January in the following year. After that, we brought the team together. We split up into multiple groups and we worked on, as Merbias said, all three of the challenges instead of just one. We wanted to make sure we could engage our entire team and we could do as much as we could virtually since the season really wasn't the same since it was online. We also worked on the Chairman's Award, which is what we won after only being like a four-year team. It's kind of crazy that we won it because usually they're, like, for veteran teams that have been around for, like, a long time. So we thought it was very exciting that we won it and we're honestly shocked. Ahmed will further on that and thank you so much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Ahmed. It's my fourth year here and it's crazy because time really flies. Really, like, yesterday, I was a freshman and, you know, the team was just starting. And, you know, now it's, I'm basically done. It's crazy. Hopefully, I can mentor next year. Anyway, so as previously mentioned by Reyna, we decided to take on all three challenges this year, provided by FRC rather than just one. And thankfully, due to, you know, being able to come in in person and, you know, work on the robot, we were able to make a new robot similar to last year's but with a new drive chain chassis and, you know, some upgrades, which really helped with, you know, in order to adapt for this year's season. And thankfully, with the in-person meetings, we were also able to mentor the FTC teams, FTC and FRC team here. We did that by, you know, making our little Arduino kits, teaching them how to program, you know, little things like that. And again, yeah, thanks to, you know, being in person and virtually, we were able to complete all three challenges, thankfully. And also complete all the interviews and the, like Reyna mentioned, the two Chairman's Award interviews. And we thankfully ended up winning one of them, the Chairman Award. So, which is really big because I wasn't expecting that, you know, for my four years. I was really hoping, you know, I'd get something. You know what I mean? Since it's like, you know, my last year, we want something. And, you know, thankfully, I really got, I got that and Chairman's Award. So that's about it. Thank you for this opportunity and, yeah, that's about it.
All right. And I just want to reiterate, you know, the Chairman's Award is something that is... It's a team award that's not just at how well you do at a tournament. It's how you well, how you, how well you function as a team. And I talked to people around. It's like, hey, you know, when, you know, how do you win this Chairman's Award? And it's like, dude, you know, you got to do a lot. And they don't even offer it. As a rookie team, you can't even, you can't even apply for it because it's, you know, it's your team over time. And talking to the director of FIRST in Michigan, she told me that usually around year six, teams start to hit their stride and they can start looking at Chairman's Award. She's told me personally, two years ago, she had a good feeling about our team because of the way we were doing things here in this district. And she goes, I have a feeling you're going to win this award sooner than six years. And I just kind of brushed it off as, you know, being nice. But it was a real shocker that we won this after our fourth year or during our fourth year. And so, you know, the blue banner as being displayed over here by these guys, you know, that's, like, you know, teams look at you different. You know, we always looked at teams different, the teams that won the Chairman's Award. And, you know, we've just elevated this whole program to a much higher level. And it all comes from the dedication of the kids, number one, putting the time in. Like I said, all we had to do was one thing. One thing. We could have done the skills challenge. We could have done the innovative design. We could have done the game design. Any one of those things. I talked to the leadership team. They're like, we want to do it all. Do you know what we're facing this year? Do you know what we're facing this year with? I was trying to keep it easy for them being online and everything and they wanted to do it all. And uh, they were rewarded for it. They were rewarded for doing this, doing the PBE challenge, doing the community service, being involved in the community. So it really comes from them. Uh, individual award, I want to make sure I, I mentioned Savannah Joma was a Dean's List finalist. That it, that goes to individuals who really put forth the time and effort into um, the program that stand out above and beyond. And um, you know, well-deserving as well. And that was an interviewed, interviewed um, award. So she had an interview between the, before a committee. As, as Ahmed said, you know, we could have taken last year's robot and competed. But they wanted to redesign it, rebuild it, make it better. So they built this uh, chassis over here on the left. The one that, the one that's towards the center is our, our uh, original one. They removed it, took it apart, built the second one. They said, no, this one isn't good enough. They built the third one. And I was just like going, okay, come on guys, really. So it's like, how much is it gonna cost me? But uh, in the end, it was worth it. Um, and I completely forgot about the video. I have the, I have this, the, the surveillance video. They were in the cafeteria testing and something went wacky. And the robot just went crashing into things and knocking things over, our own stuff, not the district stuff. And uh, they're like, oh, we gotta get a video of that. So I like, I, I talked to Mr. Boyd Knopf and he was able to pull up the surveillance camera. And it's quite funny, but I didn't even think about putting it in here, but it, so they, they, they had a big challenge before them and they, they overcame and. And did great and you know, these are the, the things that they built over the past year. Um, also, you know, the students, obviously starts with them, but it comes with the mentors as well. So Mr. Phillips, you know, he stepped up this past year to, to do two teams. Um, to do the FRC middle school team and FRC FTC middle school team. As well as helping me, I, I originally asked him to help me with the FRC, our team, the high school team. Then he wound up starting the, you know, the, the middle school team as well and it's uh, so I, I thank him. Uh, our first sponsor, our first mentor that we ever had, uh, Dr. Abbas Youssef, he's a member of the community, his kids went to Crestwood. He was our first mentor. He's a uh, electrical engineer at Ford, just recently retired. Um, but he's, he helped us out through the, those first three years. Um, got us our Ford sponsorship, uh, was instrumental in getting that, was instrumental in getting. Uh, another Ford engineer, uh, Victor Yu, you saw in the video. Who's a, a software engineer and was instrumental in, in the control awards that we won two years in a row. Um, just, you know, the level of minds that are out there, we just have to tap into that and that's what we're doing. My own son Zach, uh, mentored us uh, for the last couple of years. He's a, um. A computer science major and so he's like just total geek. He, he built an actual. Uh, working BB eight, like life-size BB eight that works and so he's just, he's kind of a geek at heart. Um, and we've had, uh, you know, all, all kinds of other mentors that have helped out that not with any skill set, but just to come in and just. Just help kid, you know, get the kids uh, on track and, and doing all that. My own neighbor. Uh, Jim Mullin, he's a retired Ford tool and die guy. He just likes woodworking. He comes in, helps us build our, our stadium. Um, you know, so it's just, it's people like that that donate their time that really, really are the heart of this program. Um, but the kids are the ones that, that dedicate themselves and put the time above and beyond from. Um, you know, their school work and these guys are all, you know, just way up here when it comes to schoolwork. And it just kind of goes with the territory. So now they're just adding more onto it. And really the, you know, the, the hands-on learning is where it, it's just, you know, the, the applying what they learn in the classroom. And putting it to use in real life is, is uh, you know, where the true learning comes in, so. Um, gotta hand it to these guys, you know, they, they put on a great, great show this year. And um, it's a privilege to be, you know, just in my position, helping them along the way, so. Thanks again for your time, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, if I can add, so right now, Mr. Mer- Mr. Merbius here at Riverside Middle School. He has a room that he'll be moving that will be dedicated specifically for STEAM and STEM education, the robotics. And um, uh, Mrs. Morgan's gonna give me that side look because she already knows what's happening, but she still gets her side look. We basically gave him an open budget to get that baby up to par where it needs to be for 21st century robotics and STEAM. We're gonna take this to another level. I want to congratulate Mr. Phillips, Mr. Merbius and all of these students because honestly. You are setting the stage and the standard and that's what we need to do here at Crestwood. We set the standard. We don't follow anyone. We set the standard to make people reach us, so great job.
Thank you Pete, appreciate it. Thanks for coming out and thanks to your students for um.
Thank you.
Great job.
Now's a probably really good time to say, anyone who wants to help sponsor, get a hold of the board office. Hey, I'm, I'm rooting for you Pete.
How long did it take to build?
Uh, we have a six-week timeframe to build and then we can continue improving it throughout the rest of the season, but. We generally have a workday rollout within two weeks.
Great job, thank you.
Kumai, or her brother?
Her sister was.
Hala, where's Hala?
We have a Harvard.
Oh, wait.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Hala, are you still here? Hala, where did your sister go? What college, university?
Well, I thought, I thought that she was the last one, but it's exciting to see there's one more. Wait, they have Stanford and where else? MIT.
Uh, could I ask a question, Dr.?
Yeah, of course.
Can we make sure that this information, because I knew it was mentioned that it would go on the web. Can we get this information Pete on our cable channel? Because I get a lot of phone calls from seniors going. What's going on in your district? And we've talked about it, I'd like to see this on cable for the community. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on.
Now that we have it all, we'll get it on there.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see that. Okay, uh, that's for that. Alright. So thank you very much for the board break.
Maybe they could uh, give little performances to elementary schools, so maybe the incoming middle schoolers will.
I believe they do.
So.
Want to be part of this?
Well, they did, they haven't in the last year.
No, but trustee Fuwaz, it's a great point because uh, something real quick to mention. Principal Nasser Inzad and the team, they led the STEAM committee to look at STEAM K eight. So this is going to be part of that because our goal is we're trying to establish funds through grant funding where we can do STEAM education K eight.
All the way through.
All the way through.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was in your Friday update about that.
And it fits our model moving forward with purposeful scheduling in the middle school and high school and industrial, industry standards, so.
Very nice.
Alright, we will be moving on, so with that, we are back to you, Mrs. Morgan. And you have quite a bit on your agenda, so.
I do, but we both do.
Yeah, you both do the same.
But I do, I do beat her by one, so.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and turn it over to uh, Mrs. Morgan with the business.
Exactly. June is just the business office month, that's how that works. Number one, approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate pro- approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, these funds are available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchasers will be sent out.
Alright, so with that, we have a, Nadia?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisition as per attachment five A one.
I hear support from the Ja. That the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions as per attachment five A one. Are there any questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
And we have a no from trustee Fuwaz. And the motion passes. Alright, number two.
Thank you, number two, approval of the 2021 millage resolution. Attached is form L four O two nine, twenty twenty one tax rate request. Which calculates our millage rates for the twenty one, twenty two school year. We are authorized by, authorized to levy eighteen mills on non-homestead and non-qualified agricultural property. To help support general fund operations. This is the sixth year of our debt service millage related to the six, two thousand sixteen bond issue. In order to make our twenty one, twen- twenty twenty one, twenty two. School year debt service payments of one million nine hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred dollars, the district will levy. Two point five one mills upon all property tech, property in the school district. Both of these millages will be levied half in July and half in December. It should be noted that the debt service millage rate has decreased by point three mills for the twenty one, twenty two. School year. Furthermore, the two point five one mills levied is well below the three point five nine mills. Originally estimated when promoting the bond issued in two thousand sixteen. In March twenty twenty, the voters approved three point. Three point zero additional mills, which will be used in increments to increase our millage rate to the statutory rate of not to exceed eighteen mills. By passing the additional three mills, our millage rate has been brought up to twenty point four six nine four. It allows for the cushion of two point four six mills. Due to the current rollback factor of point nine nine zero seven. At this time, I am recommending the Board of Education adopt the tax levy resolution for the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year.
Uh, Najah?
I recommend that the Crestwood School, Crestwood Board of Education adopt the twenty twenty one millage levy resolution. Approving eighteen mil levy on non-homestead and non-qualified agriculture, agricultural property. To support general operations so of the school district. And the two point five one mil debt levy to service current year principal and interest debt payments, see attachment, attachment five A two.
Support, okay, support from Danielle. That the Crestwood Board of Education adopt the twenty twenty one mil, old, millage levy resolution approving an eighteen point zero mil levy. On non-homestead and non-qualified agricultural property to support general operation. Uh, so of the school district and the two point five one mil debt levy to service current year principal and interest debt payments. See attachment five A two. Are there any questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it.
President Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Um, real quick, I just want to interject to remind and thank the community because this was the millage that we passed in March. Um, as a community member, it had failed previously, but we were able to get it to pass. And one of the commitments that I made as superintendent is that we will be using the money correctly. This is why we have a positive fund balance. So thank you to the community, thank you to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, number three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget amendment. Administration is requesting that the Crestwood School Board of Education adopt the amended twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget. As presented in attachment five A three. This amendment recognizes staffing changes which occurred throughout the year. Additional capital outlay purchases and realignment of expenditures, expenditures and its appropriate classifications. The, a budget amendment anticipates an increase to fund balance of approximately five hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, Nadia?
I recommend the Crestwood Board of Education approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one amended budget as presented in attachment. Five A three.
And support from Najah. Uh, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the twenty twenty one, correction, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Amended budget as presented in attachment five A three. Are there any questions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, any opposed? And the ayes have it. And if you could note, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, I know, thank you. Uh, if you could also note that it was just for a bathroom break that Sue had to step out for the vote.
Alright, number four.
No, Sue had to step out for a bathroom.
I'm saying, did everybody voted?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Number four, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two proposed budget. Administration is requesting that the Crestwood Board of Education adopt the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two proposed budget. As presented in attachment five A four. The proposed budget is a conservative approach as we await for the state of Michigan to adopt their budget. This document is fluid and will be amended when the new information becomes available.
Uh, Mo?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two proposed budget as presented in attachment five A four.
Was it Danielle?
Yep.
Okay, support from Danielle. Motion from uh, Mo that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two proposed budget as presented. In attachment five A four. All, are there any questions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, any opposed? And the ayes have it.
Thank you, number five, approval of M H S A A membership. For men, many years, districts across Michigan have worked through the Michigan High School so, school athletic association. To establish a common set of rules for the orderly administration of an interschool athletic program. Which promotes academic integrity and competet- and, uh, sorry, competitive equity. Ah, my word, sorry. According to the Michigan Internate General Opinion, number four seven nine five of nineteen seventy seven. Any local board of education which desires to do so may voluntarily join the M H S A A. By adopting the rules of the association and agreeing to the enforce these, those rules with respect to its schools.
I believe it was Danielle. Yes, Danielle?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the membership resolution to join the Michigan High School Athletic Association. For the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. See attachment five A five.
Support.
So a motion from Na- Danielle, support from Sue, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the membership resolution. To join the Michigan High School Athletic Association for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. See attachment five A five. Are there any questions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes.
Thank you, just halfway through. Number six, approval of Wayne Westland Cooperative Program Agreement. The Crestwood School District has been part of a longstanding agreement with Wayne Westland Schools to provide various opportunities for our students. The Career and Technical Education Agreement allows our students to participate in various technical programs currently not offered at Crestwood High School. The agreement will run July first, twenty twenty one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty two. It is an excellent opportunity for our students to attain experience otherwise unable to, unavailable to them.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Sue?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the one-year cooperative program agreement with Wayne Westland. As outlined in attachment five A six.
Support.
And support from Najah. Uh, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the one-year cooperative program agreement with Wayne Westland as outlined in attachment five A six. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If Miss, if uh, Dr. Masalim could just reiterate what programs they are so the public is aware of what we're offering.
I can, I can do that. We have the culinary arch program, the nursing program, the automotive program. There's also medical assistant and healthcare programs over in that section.
Fire science as well.
Yes, I'm sorry. I knew there was one I would forget, so I apologize.
I've, I, I won't tell. Anyway, alright, uh, any other questions? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Number seven, approval of Mayette College of Technology Services Agreement. Crestwood School District would like to enter into a service agreement with Mayette College of Technology. For the twenty twenty one, twenty two school year. This agreement will allow Crestwood High School's students to enroll in vocational education classes that are not available through. Our Dearborn Heights consortiums.
Mr. Chair?
Danielle?
Uh, I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Service agreement with Mayette College of Technology as outlined in attachment five A seven.
Support.
And we have support from Najah, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Service agreement with Mayette College of Technology as outlined in attachment five A seven. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Nadia first?
If we can get a background so the public is aware of what we're offering.
Michigan Institution of Aviation Technology, so it's an aviation program.
In others, they learn how to fix airplanes, helicopters, anything that flies.
Cool stuff.
Mo?
So I was just gonna say that I've had a chance to tour the facility and they do more than that. They do have uh, HVAC and they've got electrical also. Uh, they do a fantastic job. Mr. Chris Pipish, who's also a Dearborn Heights resident. Um, does a great job there along with the president Jennifer. And if you haven't had a chance to get out there, I think this is a great addition for the school district.
What's Chris's last name?
Pipish.
Pipish, okay, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes.
Number eight, approval of master service agreement. The master service agreement is pr- being presented for approval. The purpose of the agreement is to continue infrastructure support and upgrades. Wayne Risa has numerous staff that specialize in network infrastructure, server configuration and other areas of network support. The agreement is for the term of July one, twenty twenty one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty three.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Sue?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve continuing with the network service agreement with Wayne Risa. For the term of July first, twenty twenty one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. See attachment five A eight.
And we have support from Nadia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the continuing. Uh, or can, approve continuing with the network service agreement with Wayne County Risa. Uh, for the terms of July one through twenty twenty one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty three. See attachment five A. Correction, five A eight. Are there any questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, any opposed? And the motion passes.
And we're almost done. Uh, number nine, approval of Snyder Recre- Recreation Inc. requisition. The district would like to purchase materials to upgrade the playgrounds at the elementary buildings. The district has compared the prices for the twelve-inch playground border with six different companies. The prices range from twenty-three dollars per item to thirty-one dollars per piece. Administration would like to purchase the materials from Snyder Recre-ation Equipment. They can provide the same standard of materials to the district as other companies and have provided the best pricing.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Nadia?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached, excuse me, requisition for materials to upgrade the elementary. Playgrounds from Snyder Recreation for twenty-three thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars. See attachment five, five four, five A nine.
Support.
And we have support from Danielle, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached requisition for materials to upgrade the elementary playgrounds. From Schneider Recreation for twenty-three thousand four hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. See attachment five A nine. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair? I have a comment.
Yes, Nadia?
I'm very impressed with the way that our grounds look. Um, I've really noticed a huge difference. Um, the greenery, the trees, the um, flower boxes and all that that have been put in. So it's going to be exciting to see all the new additions and the changes that the students will now um, be able to. Uh, see, so this is exciting for our district because I know that those playgrounds have not been touched in years, so.
Well, the nice thing about it, if I could comment on that as well, is the fact that Kinlock has always been the school that, oh, we, we, you know, because of the flooding issue. So to see that come back, that will be very nice, so, thank you. Uh, Mo?
Was this purchased for aesthetics or was it for safety?
Safety.
It was for safety.
Yeah.
Have we gotten more than one, have we received more than one bid or have we spoken more than one company about pricing or is this pretty much?
I spoke to six other companies about pricing and they ranged from twenty-three to thirty-one dollars per, for the individual twelve-inch piece.
So this was the best uh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Of course, and they're, I apologize, but I, I don't have all the companies in front of me, but I know that there was a memo sent to Dr. Masalim. With those companies and the pricing listed.
It, it was in the, I remember it now. I apologize, thank you.
No, it's okay.
It's okay.
Alright, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, the motion passes.
I'm none, thank you so much.
Yes. But the, the, your, your supplementals that follow are quite lengthy, but it's alright. So, so, because I gotta fish through that to get to our.
You do.
Next, which is the, uh, which is personnel, so.
I apologize, but you do.
There we go. Alright, moving on. We will now go to Dr. Lazar. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you, thank you.
Thank you. This is the fun stuff. This is where we uh, talk all about growing our team.
There you go.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, the first action item is for a change in classification for Mr. Sammy Jaffiel. Mr. Jaffiel has been a dedicated member of the Custodial and Operations Department since two thousand nineteen. He takes pride in his work and is excited for the opportunity to hi- expand his service to the district and this department.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mo?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the change in classification of Sammy Jaffiel. From head custodian to maintenance according to the custodial contract step six, the, see attachment six A one.
Support.
And I believe I heard from Nadia first on the support, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the change in classifications of, of Sammy Jaffiel. Uh, from head custodian to maintenance according to the custodial contract si- step six, see attachment six A one. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Ooh, I think we all do. Yes, I'll let you go first.
Well, I just want to compliment Mr. Jaffiel. I've seen his dedication, his loyalty. I've uh, watched him uh, in action and he does take pride. watched him, uh, in action and he does take pride
Yes.
in his building. Um, and he really puts every ounce of effort into everything he does. So congratulations to him.
The Ja?
I, I just wanna say, I, when you and I walked the building, he was like really excited to show us everything that he had done and, and how he had like just taken care of some flooding issues and, I mean, after having just cleaned up some throw-up from a childhood.
That's true. That's true.
But yeah, no, he definitely, um, takes pride in, in his building. So excited for him.
That's my neighborhood elementary school, so my daughters were both there. Uh, and they've always kept it up. He just took it to the next level. So whoever is going to fill that position?
Yeah.
Wow. They got some big shoes to fill. They really do because that, that building does stand out. It does. All right. Thank you. Uh, hearing nothing else, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none and the motion passes and congratulations to Sammy.
Second action item tonight is for the appointment of a school psychologist, Ms. Stephanie Cobb. Ms. Cobb has an educational specialist degree in psychology from the New Mexico State University. She has worked as a school psychologist for thirteen years, most recently with the Southfield Public Schools. Ms. Cobb has also served as a graduate assistant for two years and is passionate about serving students in a social emotional capacity beyond a limitation to assessments.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mo?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Stephanie Cobb as school psych, as a school psychologist for the 2021-2022 school year according to the CFT contract step eleven, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A two.
Support.
And support from Danielle. That the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Stephanie Cobb as a school psychologist for the 2021-2022 school year according, school year according to the CFT contract, step eleven, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A two. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Sue?
I'm just excited to see that we're filling this position and that we're getting somebody with all that experience.
Yeah.
So it's great. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the aye, or the motion passes.
Next item today is the appointment of another school psychologist, Ms. Fay Caffey. Ms. Caffey has a master of arts in psychology from Wayne State University. She has twenty years of experience in the field of school psychology. In addition to having an expertise in administering psychoeducational evaluations for students, Ms. Caffey has a strong history of building parent-to-school partnerships and vast experiences working with students in every category of special education.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Ja.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Fay Caffey as a school psychologist for the 2021-2022 school year according to the CFT contract, step twelve, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A three.
Support.
So I have support from Sue. Uh, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Fay Caffey, uh, as a school psychologist for the 2021-2022 school year according to the CFT contract, step twelve, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A three. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Nadia?
I'm just gonna keep commenting. Uh, I think this is kudos to the team. Um, it was very hard. I know we've been looking for a couple of years and so we know what has happened to students during this pandemic with the social emotional. So to have all that support when they come back is, um, is wonderful to see and I'm excited for the kids that they will have that support. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes.
Our fourth action item today is appointment of GSRP lead teacher, Ms. Inas Hussein. Ms. Hussein earned her bachelor degree in elementary education and early childhood from Ashford University. She has two years of experience as a lead teacher in a GSRP program and has worked in the field of early childhood for fourteen years. She enjoys working with preschool-aged children and prides herself on keeping up to date with research pertaining to early childhood literacy.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Salwa?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Inas Hussein as a GSRP lead teacher for the 2021-2022 school year according to the GSRP schedule step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six dot A dot four.
Support.
And we have a motion from, uh, Salwa, supported by Sue, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Inas Hussein as a GSRP lead teacher for the 2021-2022 school year according to the GSRP schedule, step one, effective pending acceptable, acceptable pending. Boy, we're doing a lot of reading. Effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A four. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes.
The fifth action item today is the appointment of a middle school music teacher, Mr. Jonathan Toxteen. Mr. Toxteen earned his Bachelor of Music from Wayne State University. He has experience working as a music director and also did his student teaching at Crest, at the Crestwood School District a few years ago. He has developed curriculum for non-band students and utilized technology to enhance learning in the classroom. Mr. Toxteen Stein is very excited to be returning to Crestwood to continue to develop the eighth-grade band students that he started working with when they were in fifth grade.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Nadia?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Jonathan Toxteen as a middle school music teacher for the twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two school year according to the CFT contract, step zero, is that the right stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A five.
Support.
And we have support from the Ja. That the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Jonathan Toxteen as a middle school music teacher for the 2021-2022 school year according to the CFT contract, step zero, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A five. Are there any questions? I remember him.
Do you?
Lot of enthusiasm.
He was very excited.
Yeah, and this will be exciting because, yeah, this is just gonna be exciting. Excellent.
Okay.
And, uh, just need to vote, sorry. Uh, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our next recommendation today is for the appointment of supervisor of food service, Ms. Sana Said. Ms. Said has been with the Crestwood Schools for the past eight years. She has assisted in meeting the health and safety measures as defined by the FTA and the county health department. In her current role, she has assisted in all aspects of food services, including staffing, ordering, menu preparation, food service reporting, and parent communication. Ms. Said is dedicated to providing students with a healthy and appetizing menu offering to, uh, to fuel their learning.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Nadia?
I move that the, um, Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Sana Said as supervisor of food service according to the supervisor contract, step one, see attachment six A six.
Support.
And we have support from the Ja. Uh, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Sana Said as supervisor of food services according to the supervisor contract, step one, see attachment six A six. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Oops, sorry. Okay. I think it was Sue first.
I just wanted to congratulate, um, Mrs. Said in this position and also to say that I think this board, at least I am, gonna be anxious for us to get our meals back.
Yes.
And, uh, we are lucky enough to usually get dinner from food services, but with COVID, we've had carryout and, um, it'll be nice to have some home-cooked meals.
Uh, Nadia?
What I wanted to say is congratulations to the team because she's a great choice. She's a go-getter. I've observed her work. I've seen how enthusiastic she was, how, um, she listens to the employees and, um, addresses their concerns. So this was a good, good decision. Thank you.
The Ja?
So Sana's quiet, right? But she
She does her work.
She does her, she does her work and she truly cares about the district. Her own kids are in the district. Um, so she's from the community. She, you know, she, she just cares about the students. So I'm, I'm excited. Um, growing from within. She's, she's been on the job for how long? Has she been with the district? About eight years now?
Eight years.
Yep. So, yeah, no, it's congratulations to Sana and
I did, I wanna say that she reminds me of our previous, previous, previous food services director who, um, uh, lived in the community, understood the community, um, and was very in touch with the students and, and, and just treated him as family. And that's what we needed. Number one was to get our program back and have it in-house and that someone that understands our community and the needs of what our community is looking for. Yeah. So, very good. Uh, if there aren't any others, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes.
Mr. President, I may speak on
Dr. Masalim.
Uh, the food service. So the food services, because it's a, um, administrative lead position as well as an expedition with the assistant principal, you know, I hold the second interview. And I will tell you, I, in those second interviews, I try to scare people to see if they're gonna run away or not. Cause I wanna see what their reaction's gonna be. But with Mrs. Said, I threw a lot of things at her in terms of this is what we need to see in the next three years. And just to see her response, like going more local, coming up some different menu items, doing some different things that kids enjoy lunch a little bit more. She was all in and I said, hey, you sure you still wanna do all this? She was like, I'm all in. I did invite her tonight. I'm sorry she's not here, but, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to that as well.
Excellent. Excellent. No kids should ever go without food.
Exactly.
That's for sure.
She's that paper person.
Yeah, she is.
At, anytime there was any complaints or issues, I mean, like she was on it. Yeah, she was on it. And, and like Dr. Masalim said, she always had different ideas of like what she wanted to bring, you know, to the students. So, yep.
Yeah, that's excellent. All right. Um, I think we have a couple more.
I think you voted for it.
Oh, did we vote?
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did. That's right. Go ahead. You got me.
Okay, this next recommendation, I know he's here, so he's going to make sure that I pronounce his name correctly and I've practiced. So, um, the next recommendation is for the appointment of high school assistant principal, Mr. Pete Kocianis. Yes. Mr. Kocianis earned his Bachelor of Science in History from the University of Michigan Dearborn, a Master of Arts in History from Eastern Michigan University, and a Master of Science in Educational Leadership from Madonna University. Through, he, through achieving a fellowship, he has also studied at the University of Athens in Greece. Mr. Kocianis comes from the Dearborn Public Schools with five years' experience as an assistant principal at Etzel Ford High School and as a leader of the school improvement planning process as a teacher and administrator for fifteen years, fifteen-plus years in education. He has led building and district professional development focusing, focusing on social studies, curriculum, and instruction, growth mindset culture, as well as high-impact intervention instructional strategies for struggling students. He is a strong advocate of the PBIS and restorative practice approaches and likes to focus his efforts on educating the whole child and building strong relationships with all stakeholders.
Mr. President.
Uh, yes, Mo?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Pete Kocianis as high school principal for the 2021-2022 school year according to the administrator contract, classification one, step seven, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A seven.
Support.
Okay, so we have support, um, from the Ja. But I would like just to, for clarification, it is for appointment of assistant principal
Yes, I'm sorry.
because in the recommendation it says
I apologize.
Okay, just so, okay, so I will read it correctly.
We didn't get rid of the stuff ahead of you.
No, not yet.
Okay. Well, so I'll just read the correction.
I apologize.
Yes, I'll just, just so it's corrected. For the record, I will, I will
He's gonna call me right now.
I fell off the cliff with you. Thanks.
Sorry.
Jumped right over with you.
So Kristin, I, I, for the record, I'll read it correct as assist, okay. Uh, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Pete Kocianis, um, as high school assistant principal for the 2021-2022 school year according to the administrator contract, classification one, step seven, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A seven. Are there any questions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Now, you said he was here.
Yes, Pete, if you wanna come on up behind the podium. So I'd like to say in, in his second interview as well, I tried to scare him away as well. But the one thing that stood out for me with, with, uh, Mr. Kocianis, I'll never say his name or anything, I apologize. I, I've been screwing it up for a long time. Um, where he stood out compared to the other candidates is the experiences that he's gonna bring in to help our high school go to the next level. With a new principal there and we're trying to develop that school improvement mindset, the professional learning community mindset, the data mindset, and the restorative practices mindset, Pete brings all that to the table and he can come in and hit the ground running from day one. Pete? Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being, uh, for allowing me to be here. Uh, my family was gonna come, but we discovered there's other viruses besides COVID. So they got cold viruses. They're at, my wife and kids are at home. Otherwise, they would've, uh, been here. So, uh, I just wanna take the opportunity to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Masalim, Dr. Lazar, for the opportunity to join the Crestwood family. Uh, oh, I'm gonna put my mask on.
You probably gave it to her.
Yeah, I know, right? I'm gonna put the mask back on. I'm humbled, um, truly honored and, um, I'd like to pledge myself, uh, to you, uh, to this community, um, to work and strive, uh, for the betterment of, uh, all Crestwood students and families. Um, and I just can't wait to get started. Very excited. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Uh, yes, Nadia?
I just wanted to comment. I received, I was walking through the hall today at work and an employee came up to me and said, oh, we just received a call that we're having a meeting at Etzel. I said, okay. Like, why are you telling me this? I, I don't know anything. So then, um, she said, yeah, it sounds like it's bad news. I said, oh, God, I hope not. So then, after I get home and my phone starts ringing, she was, oh, he's gone. I said, who's gone? The only good one. I said, okay. So that's when I knew that he was a good pick. Cause I really don't know, Mr., cause I don't wanna say it.
That's okay. Kocianis.
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 I'm not gonna say it wrong.
Mr. K. The kids call me Mr. K. You can call me Pete. So, yeah, thank you. Um, I'm looking forward to get, to, uh, learn, um, each and every one of you and, and have conversations about you and how I can help, um, move the district forward. So I look forward to that. We'll sit down and talk.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Congrats and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And get well suited to the family.
I know. I'm gonna go home and stop and get him soup.
All right.
I good? Okay. Thank you, Pete. Have a great night. We'll talk to you. We'll, we'll hit you with the whip soon. Have a great night.
All right. Last one on the table.
Yes. Um, the last one is a recommendation for the voluntary recognition of union bargaining agent. A decision was made between the Teamsters and the paraprofessional unit at Crestwood that the Teamsters would no longer be serving as the, serving as the union bargaining agent for the paraprofessionals of the Crestwood School District. The union leadership then reached out to AFT Michigan and has sought to have CFT AFT Michigan represent them as their union bargaining unit, agent, I'm sorry. A third-party veri, verification process has been conducted in order to verify that seventy-four point four percent of the paraprofessional bargaining unit has indeed indicated through signed cards that they would like the CFT AFT to serve as their union bargaining agent. The process of recognizing a union bargaining agent can take place through voluntary recognition or through the process with the Michigan Employment Relations Commission or Merck.
Mr. Chair.
Um, Nadia.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education voluntarily recognize the CFT AFT Michigan as the bargaining representative of the paraprofessionals of the Crestwood School District and authorizes the superintendent to sign a voluntary recognition agreement on behalf of the Crestwood Board of Education.
Support.
And I have support from Danielle. That the Crestwood Board of Education voluntarily recognize the CFT AFT Michigan as the bargaining representative of the, of the paraprof, paraprofessionals of the Crestwood School District and authorize the superintendent to sign the voluntary recognition agreement on behalf of the Crestwood Board of Education. Are there any questions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes. All right, and now, thank you very much. We are done with that and I'm moving on because our next I'm missing some. Oh, no, Superintendent, Dr. Masalim. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Board. Uh, good evening, community. Uh, first, I wanna thank the Board for the previous um, amendment to the budget. Those two amendments were very crucial and timely. Um, especially Mr. David Hecker, who represents the Michigan Federation of Teachers, sends his thank you uh, for allowing that to go on the ba, on the board agenda this evening. Cause it's a very important step for our paraprofessionals as we get ready for contract negotiations. So thank you. All right, I have one action item and just some informational items. Our action item is organizational board meeting. Each year, the Board of Education must decide on a date for the annual organizational board meeting. According to board policy, this meeting must occur in the month of July. The suggested date is Monday, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM. This will be followed by a regular board meeting to conduct the monthly business of the Board of Education at seven PM.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mo.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education calls for a special meeting on Monday, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM to hold its organizational meeting, which will be followed by seven PM regular board meeting to conduct monthly business of the Crestwood Board of Education.
Support.
And we have support from Najah. Uh, that the Crestwood Board of Education calls for a special meeting on Monday, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM to hold its organizational meeting. Which will be followed by the seven PM regular board meeting to conduct monthly business of the Crestwood Board of Education. Are there any questions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. And I believe you have some other things, just a couple others, yes.
Informational items. So first, um, I wanna congratulate all of our seniors, our graduates from the twenty twenty-one school year. Um, you know, it'll be the, the last two graduating classes. I still feel bad for the twenty twenty graduates. Because I have to say that twenty twenty-one graduation was phenomenal. So therefore, I want to thank the entire Crestwood High School staff. Many people put extra hours and time into that. Uh, I want to thank the PTA and trustee Janoon, you know, for your continued support on, you know, making sure graduation was successful. Um, I, I wanna apologize to all the people that they saw me walk in and they ran away cause they knew I was gonna say, did we get this done? Did we get that done? But no, everybody got it done and everybody went above and beyond. And what was nice with this graduation this year, it was a team effort. Cause that was a last minute, like we gotta get this stuff done and stuff in. I'd also like to thank the Board for your understanding and your trust in the process. I'm gonna keep saying that, that we would get this done. And I, I have to say, you know, being part of the community, I can't hide, you know, and drive thirty minutes away or an hour away. I mean, I still see people and it's, it was very nice when people come up to me and say, you know, thank you to the Crestwood Schools for what you did for the graduation of our students. So I wanna thank the schools. I wanna congratulate the parents. It, it was a beautiful event. And the tough thing now is every year we gotta make it a little better. So we're looking forward to that.
Good luck.
Yeah, right?
Cause I've never seen anything like this.
Yeah.
Um, so it wa, it, it turned out really nice. Also, I want to thank the teachers who are working the Closing the Gap Summer School. Today was day one. Uh, we had four hundred and forty-one students signed up. I think we had two hundred and forty who showed up. Um, and this Closing the Gap Summer School is supporting elementary, middle school, and SAT prep in the high school. So it's, you know, supporting, it's free, no charge, but it's capped because honestly, we knew it was gonna be difficult to get teachers to teach at summer, cause it's been a rough year. So, you know, we had some flexibility. We allowed teachers to split the time. So the teachers that are doing it, I wanna thank them, um, and I will recognize them come the fall for their additional efforts and work. I'm sorry.
How many weeks?
It's eight, it's eight weeks, correct Penny? Eight weeks. Um, there'll be two bonus weeks at the end that supports students who need some extra help. Um, additionally, I wanna thank the Board and I wanna thank the community for your trust in the process, but also your understanding of the difficult decisions we've had to make this last year. I mean, I could si, sit here for an hour talking about the things that we've done. But when you think about where we were in March of twenty-nine, of twenty twenty, to where we are today, all I can say is, thank God, all worked itself out. This was not an ideal education for our students. We know that. But this is a pandemic, which means global. And our kids, they were able to get as much out of it as possible. Hearing our robotic students saying that when we're able to come back face to face, we're able to do so much more. This is who we are. This is who we have to be. Yes, we will set the stage. We do look and see what other people are doing to get ideas, but we're always into what's best for Crestwood and I appreciate the Board's support and guidance in that process. Um, to say that we went from two hundred and forty Chromebooks in the entire district to now we will be a one-to-one district come the fall of twenty twenty-one. I mean, that's credit to Mr. Green, Ms. Hussein, the entire technology team, and everybody that stepped up to get things done. And it's a credit to the Board for approving my crazy requisitions. Credit to Ms. Morgan for thinking I was nuts, but helping me get it done. And a thank you to Dr. Lazar, who would walk into my office, close the door, and tell me everything will be okay. So, I mean, it all worked itself out and we're moving in the right direction. I wanna thank our teachers. You know, I always say, you know, ninety-five percent of the people will do what is right no matter if you ask them to or not. I wanna say that's probably ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent now. I mean, we have people in this district that we don't see because they're not the squeaky wheels, okay? They just, they do their job, you know, and they don't ask for recognition. And I want us as a district to focus on those people. And then allow administration to handle the rest. Because that ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent, they're our future. They're our future and they want the best for our kids. And I have to give credit, I'm gonna give them a shout out, Mr. Jim Studdard, uh, union president. Mr. Jim Studdard came through for us, him and his executive team. Because we had a lot of difficult conversations on what is the best thing for our students? What is in the best interest of our children and our community and our staff? And Mr. Studdard, you know, people always think there's a clash between unions and administration. Let me tell you something in this district. There is no clash. We sit at a table, it's a round table. There's no person sitting in the front. We discuss. Yeah, we don't always agree. But we discuss and we try to brainstorm to find solutions. So I give a shout out to Mr. Jim Studdard for his support, as well as all the other union leaderships, uh, members, because everyone stepped up this year. Um, finally, you know, I wanna again, thank the Board. Um, we've had a lot of difficult conversations as well. But we had difficult conversations because we all care so much for our kids. But if you notice, those difficult conversations have led us to a lot of success. Success isn't because everybody agrees. Success is that everybody can agree to disagree, but always look at what is in the most, best interest of the students. So I thank the Board for that, you know, and I want it to be that our team and the Board, we are a model for other school districts, other states, you know, across the nation. I want us to be the model. I'm a competitor. I don't like being second best. And when I say that, I want our kids to be at the top. Because it's not me who's gonna win at the end. It's our kids. It's our kids, it's our kids, it's our kids. And finally, I hope everyone has a safe and healthy summer vacation. Be safe. You know, parents, you know, hug your kids, give them a kiss, do as much extra as you can with them. And all you guys that are driving the Chargers and the Cobra Mustangs, God bless you because I wish I had one of those, but please drive safe. Please drive safe. I am, I'm, I'm, I'm getting very disheartened by all the accidents that I'm seeing in our neighborhood and it's our kids. And those that are on motorcycles. It's not a toy. Be safe. You're talking to someone who, who rode a Harley for five years, okay? It's not a toy. Be safe. So I want everyone to have a safe and healthy summer. I hope to see everyone back in the fall. And uh, I'm excited for this coming year. I am really excited. So again, thank you. That's my commentary. Thank you, Board.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Masalim. And thanks to your staff, your team. Uh, with that, uh, I will now turn to our public. Before I read the uh, statement, are there any people? There is none. Okay, so there's no, we can forepass or bypass. I know, I know, and I even remembered, I even remembered to say we have to read the, the, the comments, so. Uh, with that, do we have any questions, comments, concerns, feedback, anything for the Bo, uh, staff from the Board? Yes, Salwa.
I just wanna congratulate all the graduates, also high school, middle school, elementary, and um, you know, I was able to attend the uh, Kinlock graduation too and uh, Mrs. Marvaso and everybody there just did a great, great job. And I really enjoy having um, graduation outside versus inside or in the arena or any of that stuff. I think it worked out much better outside.
Thank you. Um, go, go ahead, Najah. Let me do it. No, go ahead.
So I was just gonna say, our congratulations to all the graduates as well. Um, I also have a senior this year. Um, I know you guys have all, you all know that, but so we um, the seniors do get to have a prom this year, so that's scheduled for July thirteenth at the Bellagio. Um, and it's been kind of fun, although I'm not sure if my senior is attending prom. Um, it's been fun helping the kids to um, plan their prom and get all the vendors going and, and kind of letting them take charge of, you know, seeing things. You know, see, get, allowing them to make decisions on their own and, and plan their prom and just kind of guide them, but it's, it's been interesting. So, but yeah, I just wanna say congratulations to them as well.
Thank you. Nadia.
Um, I just wanted to congratulate Marianca. Um, I was shocked to see that she's retiring. She will definitely be missed because she really has kept um, uh, Hillcrest in order. Um, along, was today Mr. DeMarco's last day? One more, one more day? Well, congratulations to him for all his years. And Mr. Falati, that's gonna be a sad one because uh, he really did get teary-eyed at the uh, high school graduation. Um, it's gonna be sad to see him go, but congratulations to him. I think this is his last hurrah. So congratulations to all retirees. Thank you for your service.
Yes. Uh, Sue.
Hi, um, I wanna reiterate congratulations to all. And to let everyone know that we really are Crestwood family. Um, you know, the administration, the Board, the staff, the students. And on that note, I wanted to extend um, our sympathy to Matt Hubert's family. I think Mr. Hubert came to the district, I believe it was in nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, my son had him the first year that he was here, third grade at uh, Hillcrest. And then he went on to Riverside and although he wasn't teaching with us the last few years, um, he passed away last week very unexpectedly at the age of fifty-two. So I wanted to extend our um, heartfelt sympathy to his two daughters, uh, Allison and Jenna, and to his parents, um, who also live in the city. So uh, deep sympathy and a sad loss for everybody.
Thank you, Sue. All right. And thank you to your administration. Thank you to the high school administration. Uh, I'm just gonna echo, that was outstanding. I, I, how you pulled it off so quickly is beyond me, but it sure was nice to have it back at Crestwood versus the arena. Um, because it takes us away from what I feel is the, the Crestwood home. And um, it was, it was, it was done very, very well. I would like to ask, there was no end of the year uh, breakfast or luncheon for staff. So I would like to ask, and you don't have to answer right now, but when we come back in the fall, because we'll have a new food services director, I would like, on behalf of the Board, I hope the Board would agree, that the Board is inviting uh, those that have retired to come back and then maybe a welcome breakfast. I would love to see that because we haven't done that in a few years and I think that's really important in welcoming everyone back for the start of the school year. Um, so if that's something that Mrs. Said would love to take on and, and challenge herself, that would be great. Um, other than that, I have nothing else. So I will ask for an adjournment.
Sold.
Support. And all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. All right, we are adjourned and the time is eight thirty-four. Is that right? Eight thirty-three. Thank you.